Yeah. Okay, on behalf of the Board, thank you for being here this evening for your continued support of our students, staff, and schools. This is an official meeting of the Board of Education, held in a public for the purpose of conducting the business of the school district. It is not a community forum, however, time for public participation is provided as indicated on the agenda. Under the public comments, before we begin, I'd like to remind our guests that a sign-in sheet copy is right there on the agenda table, right up there, you can sign in. For those who are joining us online, you may subscribe to the meeting posting and agendas through the district website at www.hamadyhawks.net at this time. I invite everyone to please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could one of my Board members please read the mission statement?
The District will provide a high-quality education and guidance, and guidance to all students delivered by educators with a passion to see every student succeed.
Roll call, Ms. Ennis.
Ransford, here.
Here.
Bikes.
Here.
Johnson, absent.
Roberts. Here.
Walker.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Approval of the meeting agenda?
So moved. Board.
It's been moved by Mr. Bikes, supported by Mr. Walker. Discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Six aye, zero opposed, this that motion carries. Committee reports. Building and grounds?
She's not here, so I will give you a little upgrade on what's going to happen. Me and Ms. Tyra and Ms. Johnson met with Mr. Key on the property, sale into the property for...
Oh, excuse me.
She missed the audit.
Well, this was next. Audit was out of place. We're going to do the audit before we go into that. I apologize.
Very good.
Okay. I don't see it even on...
Audit presentation somewhere.
Audit presentation.
It's just out of...
Yeah, just only have to stay out there.
And that says...
From the first page, bottom.
Oh, okay. Let's do our audit presentation for the fiscal year 2025. Move.
(inaudible)
There we go. Left, right, up and down.
My fingers...
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name's Jeff Sebalish. I'm a partner at Lewis and Doff. I'm the partner in charge of the job and the audit if it is required to have in the whole floor. Anyway, you've got PowerPoint and the copy of the financial statements, as well as the management letter. Excuse me, as well as the management letter for the district in front of you. So we'll just go through the PowerPoint slides this evening. So here, on your first slide, auditor's opinion, if that wants to work. Anyway, the district received a clean opinion on the financial statements. What that means is that's the highest level of assurance we can give on statements. Basically, what it's saying is two things. Let me grab my copy. It seemed to have a little bit of trouble working. It's all right. You good there? Okay. You've got better touch than I do. So anyway, back to the last slide. With respect to the opinion on the financial statements. So we've given the highest level of assurance that we can on the statements. What that means is that the statements are free from material misstatements and presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. As part of that testing, we do a test of internal controls. We get a narrative from the business office, in this case, from Erica, of how transactions walk their way through the system. We do a check to see if the checks and balances are there that are going to catch whether they're intentional or unintentional. We've had no findings there. We go through the revenue cycle, payroll cycle, other disbursements. No issues there. With respect to our audit of federal awards, clean opinion there, no findings. The program we audited this year was our nutrition cluster. There's about 2 million in federal awards this year. Nutrition cluster was about a little bit over a third of that. This number, as you probably well know, is quite a bit down from the 23-24 number because of Esther's dollars. That number in 23-24 was probably closer to 4.7, 4.8 million. Okay? What we're looking at in the nutrition cluster is basically our cost allowable. Okay, our using it to feed kids, basically. I mean, there's other tests. There's tests about the fund balance. There can be tests about claims, et cetera. No findings there. Not sure. Oh, there we go. Fund balance, working from... My apologies. Working general fund, food service, student activity, debt fund, and capital projects. With the general fund, you'll see a use of the fund balance of about $570,000. At 630-25, the fund balance was $560,000, which represents 25% of the general fund expenditures. So 25% would be three months' worth of expenditures. Food service had a little bit of use of fund balance, $140,000. And student activities, debt, and capital projects operating as they're intended to operate. Here, next slide, with the general fund revenues. Jeez, sorry about the struggle here. General fund revenues, about 21.3 million for the year. That number for 23-24 was quite a bit higher, about 26 million, for two reasons. One, the reduction in the federal awards, and two, the reduction in the number of students, so less was coming from the state. Okay? There you see. The split moving from 23 to 24, you would have had more in federal in the prior year, and that slice of the pie would have been bigger. And the state, yeah, probably right about the same. And local, that consists primarily of property tax revenue. Yeah, where are we at here? I'll figure this out by the time I'm done.
Don't tip it, just touch it, roll up. Roll up.
That's just expanding it. My apologies. Expenditures, general fund. They are... It's just getting bigger on me. Yeah. Okay, thanks. Split up, but this bigger slice of the pie here, that's instructional expenditures. That's your support expenditures, relatively the same as the prior year. Here's a split by what we call function. It's the two bigger slices of the pie, the 43% and the 29%. That's your salaries and benefits, so total about 72%. That's pretty consistent with prior years. As far as comparing this district to other districts, it's right in the same ballpark area of what other districts are doing. As you're able to see, this yellow piece of the pie get bigger as districts start to outsource more of their services, whether it's transportation, custodial, food... Well, this wouldn't apply to food service, because this is only the general fund, but that would be an example of what's being outsourced. So transportation, custodial, substitutes, that kind of thing, that's what's right, would be in that slice. But again, as I said, that's 70%, 72%. That's pretty consistent as to what it's been in prior years. And the expenditures went down as the revenue went down, you know? Goes without saying. A lot of that's just grant revenue, that you don't have the money, you can't spend it. Here, the budget versus actual, we were right on budget with respect to revenue. Small variance, a little bit under budget, probably just some unspent grant revenue. You'll see the same thing on the expenditure side, changing net assets for the year. Budgeted a use of about 900,000 of the fund balance, and the actual is about 570, so a positive variance of 346,000. These general obligation bonds, those are what you use for the football stadium and some utility-type upgrades a couple of years ago. Those were board-approved bonds, direct borrowings, just the lease, and then compensated absences are what you would pay out to employees if they were to leave, so that number's about 3.5 million. This slide here, this deals with what we term your government-wide financial statements. So at the statewide level, with respect to the retirement plan, that plan is not fully funded. The liabilities, the projected liabilities to the plan are less than their existing assets sold. The measurement date is actually September 30th, but for presentation purposes, it's June 30th of 25. The district's share of the statewide liability, statewide liability is more likely for win with, okay, the district's share of that is 23 billion. Okay, that liability at this point in time was more like 33 billion, with this point in time being 630 to 24. So the statewide liability went down, basically because the value of the assets within the plan grew from technically 930-23 to 930-24. So the investment value was higher, therefore making the liability less. On the healthcare piece of that, that's actually an asset. That fund or that piece of the retirement pie, if you will, that's actually fully funded. That's an asset to the district of 37, 3.7 rather, million. The statewide liability is closer to 4 billion, or asset, rather, is closer to 4 billion. A year ago, the asset was 570,000, and at that time, a year ago, was about 565 million. So when you piece all that together, include that with your fund level, the net position deficit is about 10.8 million, okay? That's very common. Most districts in the state are still in debt, so the government-wide level, the net position is actually a negative. Most of that is related to, well, in either case, just about all of it's related to recognizing that liability at 23 million. Without that liability, and without that asset, the net of those two being 20 million, you'd have positive net position of about 9 or 10 million. So again, that's just presented, because when you look at the statements at the government-wide level, you're going to see a negative there, or the term deficit. That's why we bring that up. Last slide is just kind of thanks to staff and whatnot. With Erica here, you see ISD. Prior to that, you know, you've had various people here in prior years. Karen was here for a little bit, and Rebecca Boggs prior to that. But the use of the ISD really is very helpful with respect to internal control. You've got Tracy over there with accounts payable. You've got what I term kind of the backroom functions of Kim Ty and Sarah Carter with banking, still with the agents helping out with payroll functions. So from an auditor perspective, that really helps with internal control. So if something's going to go wrong, more than likely, there's a check and balance or some sort of control in place that will catch that. So anyway, again, back to the first slide, clean opinion on the financial statements. Again, highest level we can give, or highest level of assurance that we can give with respect to the federal awards piece, no findings there.
Okay. I wanted to just explain to me what is unfunded pension liability?
Well, so we've got our employees of the district, okay? Whether it's existing employees, well, actually, it's statewide. Who's ever a participant in the statewide plan, what we term the MIPSers Plan, the employee's retirement system. Okay, so there is a projected liability for what will be paid out in terms of pension to these participants. And this district funds that liability by making contributions to that plan. At any point in time, the projected liability of the plan can be less than the assets. The idea being not everybody's going to retire at once. Not everybody's going to cash in their marbles or chips all at once, okay? So to the extent there's kind of more outflow out of the plan than there is inflow in terms of contribution, there's going to be an unfunded liability. So in effect, the projected liability, given things like age of the participants, how long they've been in the plan, return on investments factors such as that, the liability can exceed the assets at any given point in time. So that's on the retirement side. On the healthcare side, there's also contributions made to that plan to fund future healthcare benefits. That particular side is fully funded. That's why on that one slide that you saw an asset with respect to what we term other pension employee benefits. So it's just, at any point in time, that liability's going to exceed, well, not necessarily, but in this case, may exceed the assets of the plan.
So does each district have their own independent plan?
No, it's one, we term a cost-sharing plan. So it's one cost-sharing plan that each district, and if you saw the numbers, the Westwood Heights share of that $34 billion liability worked out to be like 1/10 to 1%, okay? It was like 20, I said 34, I think I meant 24. Your share, yeah, your share is like 24 million out of 24 billion of that liability. So whether I'm at this district, or Flushing, or Genesee, or Bentley, or Bendel, all districts are going to report, as long as they're participants in the statewide plan, they're going to report their share of that unfunded liability. On the flip side, they're going to report their share of that while turning over funded asset.
Didn't that go into, basically, about 20, 25 years ago, when everybody went to the same plan?
Um...
Or earlier than that? Because it used to be each school district had their own retirement plan.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure on the date, Lester. Okay, the reporting requirement on that went into effect 11 or 12 years ago. The original idea was that the plan, the plan get fully funded within about 25 years. Okay, well, that's, and a lot of that was based on how many people they projected in the system versus how many are coming out. You know, when you die, you get off the roll kind of thing, as long as there's not continuing benefits for a surviving spouse. But that can change a lot based on the value of the investments within the plan. So we've seen that liability. If we went back 11 years, and there's a schedule in the financial statements of how that's worked from 10 years ago until today, it's a 10-year schedule that you'll see in there. You'll see what's happened to that liability 10 years here. Depending upon the year, you can look at the liability and go, oh, that's probably what was going on in the stock market. Okay? I mean, that can be one of the, that can be probably the biggest factor in determining whether, how much the plan is underfunded, or in the case of the healthcare piece, overfunded.
But it has went down in the last 10 years, per se.
I certainly know it went down from 23-24, but if we look at, you know, the last time stock market had a downturn, and the value of the investments, and the liability didn't change. The value of the investments would have changed, so, you know, you could go back on that schedule and go, oh, that's right, we were having bad years in the stock market that year.
You said that 1/10, 1% of the 24 billion is 24 million?
Yeah, if I, yeah, if I did my math right. I got to move the... Okay. Yeah, you'll see those exact percentages in the financial statements, in the note 11 to the financial statements. Okay, that's the copy with the spiral binding on the end. But you'll see the exact numbers in note 11 to the financial statement. And those statements are provided to us from the actuaries, well, they're provided to us from the retirement system, you know, Michigan Retirement System, but it's based on audits of what's done of the retirement plan. You're probably looking about page 30 of the financial statements there, but it's note 11. And on the healthcare side, and that's in the same footnote, on the healthcare side, you'll see that the assets exceed the liability.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. If any questions come up, I'm sure Erica could have, would have the answer, but if not, you can ask me. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day. Okay, if we can go back to our committee reports.
240 million.
And Mr. Bikes, you were updating us on the building and grounds?
Okay. Had to get my head back right to where I was at. It was an interesting meeting, because we were trying to figure out what to do with GLISB, as opposed to selling it, and how much it costs to tear it down, and what the man wants to do with it. So we gave Mr. Key's a scenario of finding out how much it costs to tear it, I mean, to, what was the cost benefit of us doing something with GLISB as opposed to giving it to the church, or giving it, or finding out the appraisal value, and giving it, selling it to the church, or selling it to the man, or whichever way it want, whichever way you want to do. So he was supposed to look into it. He did give appraisals. I thought the appraisal might come back at $20,000. That is $20,000 an acre. We got about 10 acres. So that's $250,000, roughly, on the appraisal for the man himself. So $500,000 near about to tear it down because of the investors in it, which is about almost $300,000 to get the investors out of it first. So the man was trying to get it from us for a little or nothing, and that's why we gave him the marching orders of trying to figure out whether, how much it costs and how much it's worth, and whether to deal with the church or not. And then we're supposed to meet with the man and the church with appraisal price together. We haven't did that yet, and that's next on the agenda. So that's what happened at the last meeting. We all sat down and it came to a consensus as to what we're going to do with the property as far as, because we have to do something with it because of insurance purposes, because they said they weren't going to insure it no more, so even though we, even, okay, even, anyway, we had to do something with it.
Okay.
So that's where it was at. That's where it's at right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bikes. Anyone have any questions? Okay, finance and treasury reports?
I don't have anything unless these guys have any.
Yes, could you...
You want to go over something you got down there?
Yes, please.
Finance report slash bills payable. The complete report is included in your board meeting materials. Accounts payable submitted for board approval are as follows. General fund: $686,793.54. Food service: $56,933,049. Site, I see zero, for a total of $762,290.85. There you go. Thank you.
I make a motion? I make a motion that we accept the finance report as stated.
Support.
It's been submitted by Mr. Bikes, supported by Mr. Walker. Any discussion? How we change it? Raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
If ayes, zeros, opposes, that marching carry. Policy committee?
I am not the superintendent, but I do have his report. All right. We're excited to share the...
Successfully completed another month of the school year. The next few weeks will move quickly as we approach Thanksgiving break and Christmas break. To help you stay connected and involved, we will send you now with all the activities happening across the district so you can participate where possible. October was a busy and vibrant month. Our varsity boys' football team made it to the playoffs with their final game held last Saturday. While they didn't win, we are incredibly proud of their hard work and dedication throughout the season. Right now, volleyball tournaments are taking place just around the hall in the...
Hamady Gym. Our varsity girls' volleyball team has had a stellar season, and it's an...
Our varsity girls' volleyball team has had a stellar season, and it's an honor for Westwood Heights to host these games this year. Our schools also celebrated Halloween with a variety of fun activities, including trunk or treats, walk-throughs, walk-throughs, dances, and spirited Spirit Week. The principals will share more about the excitement and creativity that filled our buildings. We are also thrilled to introduce a new initiative, the Cares Team, C-A-R-E-S capital team. This small but mighty group of staff members is committed to shining a light on the incredible work happening across the district. They send weekly and monthly acknowledgements to celebrate staff, share a daily spark to uplift spirits, and promote a culture of gratitude, kindness, and connection. Their goal is to ensure every staff member feels seen, valued, and appreciated. Their spark is truly needed, and it's growing stronger every day. Our Cares Committee is Ms. Ennis, Ms. Armour, and, uh, Mrs. Harvey. Thank you for your continued support of our student, staff, and district initiatives. That is, uh, Superintendent Keyes' report. You have a copy of Student Support Services' report there, and it's, I'll let you read it, um, at your leisure. Just a few things I wanted to highlight. At our elementary buildings, uh, Hamady Elementary, the first graders are diving deep into reading by utilizing the Half-Pint Kids book series, and that's being taught by our special education teacher, Mrs. Riggy, who has been trained by the state-endorsed Science of Reading Program Letters. Um, our Hawks squad at McMonigal, they're doing the peer-to, uh, peer-to-peer program, and we now have thirty students involved in that program. And what the program is, it's, uh, intentionally connects students with and without disabilities across the school day to promote belonging to all students. Uh, so, we're really proud about that program. Our life skills class in the middle and high school, uh, their focus is on financial literacy this month, and we're using Dorit Financial Credit Union's, uh, free curriculum, and we have a guest speaker that will be coming to Hamady tomorrow to talk about financial literacy. Uh, the transition of our students into general education classrooms with support has been very successful, and students are utilizing their time and staff wisely. Grades are on the uptick, and unwanted behaviors decreasing in the middle school and high school. Our, uh, speech department, the speech language pathologists, they participated in the countywide G.I.S.D. meeting, and they've come back and, uh, presented a lot of augmentative and alternative communication core boards, and they are posted throughout the hallways and lunchrooms in our elementary buildings, and this is promoting further inclusion for our non-verbal students, which is, which increases inclusion for those students as well. Our social work department at Hamady Elementary, students, uh, received a lesson on anti-bullying, and they created posters, and the first graders are hanging those throughout the school. Thank you. Our, uh, principals have, uh, presentations that, uh, they're gonna come up and talk about elementary, uh, you wanna go first? You want me to pass my...
Things are good. Good evening.
I wish my house was always good.
My comfort zone, but I will stand and deliver. Um, uh, our U.V.A. partnership at Hamady Elementary is ongoing. We actually have, uh, twenty-three pre-service teachers working in the building every Tuesday with students. Um, things are going great. Um, our partnership with Went Excellence is, we're going into our third year, we're focusing on math this year. First two years were E.L.A., this year we're focusing on math, particularly number quarters. Um, I have some growth goals here that we have, um, designed as a team in both buildings to raise our M-Step scores, as well as our growth with N.W.E.A. And I have also attached on the back some different, um, strategies that we're working on in the buildings to address some of those gaps, uh, some of those gaps. I wanted to share with you, um, as you can see, some of them are, are building-wide initiatives of vocabulary. So, every week we have a vocabulary word, um, everybody's learning it together, everybody's using it in a sentence. We do this in, um, looking at our data, that students were struggling with complex sentences, you know, other than just a, a one-liner type thing. So, we're really focusing on that. We're also focusing on fluency, and we're doing that with intention. Every, every classroom goes into the library and, um, they do a read aloud. And it's very intentional, it's, uh, that model thinking, big allow, it is focused on vocabulary. So, never, but, um, but, um, so this is our story per, this week, that everybody's reading. It includes lesson plans. So, here's the lesson plan, and as you can see, the book is tabbed, so if the teacher reads on the back, it's got instructions, so everybody's learning together, so you can look at that, sorry. Um, extracurricular, oh, also, with some of these initiatives, I started last year, we have, um, increased our instruction time. So, for like, uh, E.L.A., in the normal, uh, elementary setting, it's ninety minutes. Um, that includes reading and math, or, no, reading and writing, sorry, excuse me. Um, reading and math, reading and writing. So, now, every teacher is teaching a ninety-minute block of reading and an hour of writing. So, that's like more time to practice the skills, more time to, um, for students to really absorb that and practice. We also have added an additional thirty minutes in math. So, instead of a sixty-minute block, every student's receiving ninety minutes every day. We also have our interventions with our wonderful paraproses who are working, um, with small groups of students that are a little bit behind, meaning of where they're, where they're at, and our after-school programs as well. Are really focusing on literacy. So, that's all I have. I have the extracurricular updates, of course, trunk or treat mentioned, it's always a huge success at the elementary. After-school programs. We also have, um, a new initiative this year. It is our distinguished gentlemen. They come in with our sixth-grade boys twice a week, and they're sort of mentors. We're gonna get, uh, the boys some ties and some shirts and some jackets, and, um, they just, they bring up some good conversation, they help them with homework and things like that. So, uh, Mr. Blake, Amir and Amar, if you remember them, had, he is overseeing that, so he promised to come and present sometime in January. That's all I have. Thanks. Thanks for the role.
Hi, everybody. You guys have my report. Mine is pretty simple and to the point this month, I didn't get to, in depth, I was told I couldn't, um, to keep it simple. So, as simple as I can do it. Um, teaching and learning continues to be our top priority at the middle school. We've completed our first marking period. As you guys know, we had parent-teacher conferences on Thursday and Friday. I've gone ahead and figured out which of my kids have achieved those levels, and so, I've got, you guys have got them, um, the kids that are at our bronze level, which is three point oh to three point four nine, the kids at our silver, silver level, three point five to three point seven nine, and our gold level, three point eight to four point oh. I was so excited to see my list, that was so long. I was proud of my kids. Gold, we can push a little harder, but my silver and my bronze lists are really there. My kids are really working hard. Uh, Ms. Jackson, our counselor, is hard at work. She's, um, looking at ways to provide different outlets for my kids, um, you know, we share a lot of teachers with the high school when it comes to our electives, and so, we're trying to figure out different ways to get our kids involved in things. We, um, met with Boys and Girls Club, we, um, we're trying to figure out a partnership with them, but we gotta figure out about transportation. Um, she's looking at different careers we can, we can, you know, expose our kids to. Mr. Bransford took our kids to this drone thing at, um, the airport la- last week, week before last. The kids are still talking about it, they enjoyed, I know it was a little cold, but they enjoyed that. Um, our social worker is still working with youngsters, our youngsters, um, Sigma brothers come in on Wednesday night, work, they work with our boys. I try to sneak in just so I can hear what they're talking about, they give me the funny look, and so I sneak back out because it's a boy thing or a man thing, so I leave them to that, but I can see the difference in a lot of our boys. They need that mentoring, that boys mentoring, and so, I'm still trying to work on our girls' mentoring. Um, I talked to some of my primary sisters, we went together on Saturday, and I'm hoping I get some of them to come on out and do a group. Our boys' athletic teams are killing it, this school is awesome. Um, our boys' football team went undefeated this season, they were still, they were like, why can't we play more? And I was like, I don't know who else you gonna play? You need everybody, don't wanna, people don't wanna come play us. Um, but basketball has started, and so, Monday night, we were at homes, I was, we had both a seventh and eighth grade boys' team, basketball team. We won both of those games, um, hands down, it was so much fun, I truly enjoyed that. My girls' basketball team, they did rally in the end, and they won their last couple of games. Next up for the girls is volleyball, but our cheerleading squad is still cheering, you should see them on the sidelines. Homes didn't have a cheerleading squad, so our girls really shined. And, and gentlemen, let me tell you, we had two boys on our cheerleading squad, and they shined the other night. Uh, what else do I have? Oh, okay, so as a principal, I'm still doing my innovative leaders we met today. Every time I come out of that Zoom, I just feel so inspired. It's nice to hear what everybody else is doing and know that we're doing similar things here in our district. We're, um, we're keeping up with the times, y'all. Um, I checked for my first minute school, Halloween dance here, and it was interesting. They standing in clusters, and they don't dance, um, I was the only one dancing. But it was fun, and, and I have to admit, my middle school team showed up and showed out, everybody was there to chaperone and help with the kids, it was wonderful. Um, and then on Monday, I did my first presentation of student of the month for both our seventh and eighth grade, um, students. The kids were like, student of the month? They were shocked because they thought they were getting in trouble when I made them all come into the, um, auditorium after lunch, and when they realized it was something exciting and, and new, they, they were excited. So, now I'm hoping that when they see these first two that got student of the month, that they'll work for it too. Um, I went ahead and I was starting, I was gonna give them like coupons or, or gift cards to like McDonald's or something, and one of my teachers was like, but who's gonna take them? And then, are they gonna share their card with their siblings? And I was like, oh, yeah, that defeated that. So, I got them gift certificates to Hawks, Hawks National, or could call it Hawk Hideout. And so, they get to spend their money at Hawk Hideout, we made them little, um, certificates with their picture on it, and so, Ms. Jacobs just keeps track of their money, and so, they get to spend their money here, which is nice, because it, it stays in a bit. Um, I also did a Hawk Habit Award for somebody that's caught doing the right thing. I didn't tell them, the young lady that won kind of alerted the staff at the Halloween dance that something didn't look right. And so, I didn't tell the other kids why she got her award, but they were like, oh, what did she do? But now they're all curious, so that they, they start to do those habits, so they can get caught doing Hawk Habits and maybe get the Hawk Award. That award was a little smaller than the other two, but she still has a little money to spend at the Hawk Hideout as well. Um, that's it for me at the middle school level. We, um, we had P.D. on Friday, and my teachers took, we spent, I'm gonna say, most of the day, um, by the time we were done, it was about one-thirty, two o'clock, and that was including, um, their lunch. We dived, took a deep dive into our data, and we discovered a lot of things, and so, my teachers are gonna start working towards the things that will help decrease the deficit. I thought my data was way worse than it is, but when I took a deep dive, I was like, my kids aren't that low. They're proficient in things, right? So, they, they show up as partially proficient a lot of times, and so, we're gonna, we're gonna figure out what we need to do to make our bubble kids more proficient. But we'll get into more data as we move through our time. Okay. Thank you, any questions?
Oh, thank you so much.
I have a suggestion.
Okay, I'm always listening.
As a person, I used to be in this building, that was one of the ideas that I suggested was the gift card for the Hawk Hideout. However, you know, maybe giving them passes to the middle school games also, you know, as, as in, it's a middle school games.
Yeah, well, I think they're gonna use those things, um, for P.B.I.S. So, I'm trying not to step on their toes, because we need to find things that are free, and that's free.
Yes, it is.
Right, so they're gonna give passes to like the, the middle school games, the high school games, um, when we do things like, um, teachers against students games, you know, during the day, they'll use those, those points.
Yep.
To get it, so I try to leave, um, a little bit of things for P.B.I.S. to use as well. Thank you, guys. Oh, you have something else to say? I sure will, I sure will. You're welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Don't wanna report, or, repeat anything that was already said, but just a couple things. We do have our parent-teacher conferences the next two days, and tomorrow evening from five to seven is our senior parent night, so all of our seniors that are looking to graduate in June, their parents are gonna come out and get that pertinent information for what they need to do for the rest of the year. Uh, this coming Monday, we're gonna have our P.B.I.S., that's our Positive Behavior Intervention and Support kickoff. We're gonna have basically a half-day of school in the morning for students to go to all their classes, and then the whole afternoon is gonna be introducing all of those Hawk Habits that we talk about throughout the year. So, uh, the teachers have put together a really cool plan, they're gonna have four spaces that they go to, and we're gonna include the district's mission of be the light in some of the ideas that we're doing, so they're gonna do some glow volleyball and things like that. They're gonna be fun and exciting, I don't wanna give all the details away yet, but, uh, that's what we're looking forward to for Monday. And we were supposed to have our student representatives here tonight for the board meeting. I was just able to clarify our senior representative, she had to work tonight, I said she missed the night at Taylor, and for a junior class representative. So, I talked to a couple of young men today, they said, nobody really wants to do that, but if you need somebody, I'll do it. So, I think I might have two for our next meeting.
I have a volunteer for you.
Okay. And everything else was kinda already shared either by Ms. Geiser or Ms. Georges, so unless anybody has any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So, uh, over at Academy West, I took a trip down to the Adult Ed, I wanna say about two weeks ago, and they were getting things ready for their Halloween party down there. And, uh, they really decorated it up, and, and, I mean, they had some really good desserts and things there, so, uh, they do it well. But, they were telling me that one of the Adult Ed ladies that's in there, as a student, actually is starting up her own printing company. And, uh, a couple of products, they gave me a couple of products, I could pass you around, just to get some samples, so you can see some of the stuff everywhere. So, the labels in the bags there, so, I had to have that around me a little.
This is far as it goes, huh?
Cause they didn't have enough for everybody, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Ended on Mr. Fikes, yeah. Uh, you can see there, they put the logo of the school on there and, uh, some, some graphics that she put together and did a really nice job. So, in the future, might be partnering her up with a couple of projects that the Adult Ed wants to do, they can, uh, print up some things. Uh, also, we had Angela Lottz and the, the Hype Group, and Hype stands for Helping Young People to Employment. They had their graduation last night. She's been working with our students for the last few weeks, uh, several weeks. And, uh, so they had their graduation last night, and, um, I was not able to be there, but I did talk to her today. And so, she told me how things went, how proud she was of the students, and, uh, man, they had, they had a nice little meal there for the kids and their, their parents. Uh, and they had a couple of people there doing practice interviews, so the kids, you know, so they're teaching them how to go to work. You know, you show up, show up on time, you, you need to do, you dress up, and they practiced doing some interviews. So, these kids can go out and get employment. Uh, they started bank accounts for a lot of them, where the parents approved. And so, uh, that went really well, and they were excited. I know some of the kids talked to me about it, uh, Monday. Um, on the academic side, in our Play-Doh lab, and we're finishing up with term one this week. And, uh, Play-Doh classes, I mean, they've been passing like crazy, the kids have. They had over three hundred completions this first term, which is, uh, pretty high for the number of students that we have as, as we are. Uh, so they're, they're working, and when I talked to the, uh, staff that's in there, they said, man, walk around and look. Look at what the kids are doing. They're on task. They're on the computers, going through the classes. They're filling out the notes. They're going through it. So, these are legit classes. And the last thing I wanted to say is, I know in the superintendent's report, they talked about the cares group. I know Ms. Bridget is, uh, one of them. And they do send out emails of encouragement, uh, not just Be the Light, but, I mean, encouragement. And I appreciate that. I read those, and she sent me a nice one, uh, the other day, and just a little encouragement every so often, you know, so it's nice. Thank you. Is there any questions? Anybody who have?
The Play-Doh classes, are they able to take your kids home for that and work on it, or is it just during school hours?
They're doing it in the classroom. So, they're doing all these completions right there under the supervision and, uh, doing it in the classroom. They can do some of the work at home, as far as going on, going through the tutorials, learning the material, but they have to take the tests. They have to do the paperwork right there in the classroom. Any other questions? Did you get to see the, so they did pass around, yeah. Turned out pretty nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, really good job.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Roberts, I do have, uh, one follow-up. Um, we do plan on presenting, uh, the data via Munetrix and our NWA and all of that in a board workshop. We haven't scheduled that date, but we're going to present that data, uh, take a look at where we are, how we plan to move forward, implementation of strategies, and what changes that, uh, we are planning on making and need to be made. So, we will have a comprehensive data report scheduled for the, hopefully, the year in the future when Superintendent Key returns. We said that's the first thing we're gonna talk about.
All right.
I am so proud to see us all on the same page, and that we're all pushing academics. That has been so important to our district, and I appreciate all the hard work that you guys are doing to make that happen.
Back on though. So, thank, thank you for all your hard work. You're doing exactly what I envisioned. Thank you so much. Action items. Finance. Can I get a motion, please?
Already did a motion on finance.
Let's all move.
Already did a motion on finance. Didn't we do that?
Yeah.
Already did that.
Yeah. That, we did an audit report. Yeah. Did we, uh, make a motion and approve it?
The, I'm not sure about the audit. Was audit required to make a motion? I make a motion that we accept the audit that, as stated, uh, receptacle, we, by the, by the man who showed up. Uh, Finance Department.
Board.
Okay, it's been moved by, uh, Mr. Fikes and supported by Mr. Walker. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Six ayes, zero posers. That motion carries. Public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments on non-agenda items. Okay, does anyone on the board would like to make a comment?
I do. Go ahead. You wanna go?
No, you go ahead.
So, um, I, I went to my Vegas conference, and it was, um, very, 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 very enlightful. Um, I learned so much, um, but the one thing that stood out to me, there was a lot, but the one thing that stood out to me was one of the meetings, one of the courses was talking about mental health and how there is a program that is for free, that they pay their people that are licensed and qualified to come to the schools and help work with students with mental issues or behaviors and all of that. And I have that, that information right here. Um, they have a lot of money to provide a lot of resources to our students, um, and, and it's statewide. Um, what they did tell us is that a lot of the, our schools are not utilizing this program. Um, but I, I do wanna get with the respective person or maybe talk with Mr. Key and tell him more about this. So, so they will, yep, and so they, we can, I don't know, but that's what I learned about. Okay, that's cool.
I don't know that we're utilizing these strategies right now, but our teachers and staff have been trying to, and so that's something that we can use.
Oh, yeah.
Trails for them to put away.
Okay, that's what I learned, and that's one of the many things that I've learned, but that was the one that stood out to me because working with the students, I know that the, the, the mental health piece, the behavior services is very imperative for their success, uh, for them to succeed. So, yeah.
Great. Any, Mr. Fikes?
Well, I was just gonna comment on the conference. The conference was really extraordinarily nice, and, uh, one of the, one of the speakers were, I went to the, the, uh, lawyers end of it, on how much money we supposed to get. It's always interesting because they're still playing games with us at the state level on how much money we supposed to get, how much money we should get, how much money we could get. So, they spoke on that really well, and they said that they still hadn't made up their minds yet about which way it flies. And so, our coffers are still increasingly small compared to what the state's supposed to do unless they hit it at the last minute here. I've been gone for a week or so, so I'm not sure. But that itself, that, another speaker, which I left my notes at home, so I can't speak on him, but he was really good at first. They ask, their speakers are after breakfast, like networking, and then, and he was really good at what he did, and he was a, he wa, he goes around and he does certain things. Like he said, he's not coming here in, in January because he lives in Palm Springs. So, he said, he's not, he's not, he's not gonna deal with Michigan in winter time. But he was really good on what he, what he did, what he did. And like I said, I left my notes at home, so I can't help you on that part. I just know that it did enlighten me for which way it worked for me. So, and that being said, that's all I have to put down.
Yes, I wanted to add to that. Not to him, but to me.
Yeah.
But, um, they also told us about, um, the thirty-one double A grants. And I don't know if a lot of people are aware of that thirty-one double A.
Yeah.
So, that's just something to keep in mind, you know, on, if that's something that we really want to explore. For those who don't know, that, um, the mental health, um, grant that they give, that there is a caveat to that. We waive all of our legal rights if something catastrophic happens. So, if we take the grant, we waive our rights. So, that's just something that, that in a nutshell.
Yeah, that, that is something that we need to discuss as a board, maybe at our, we'll, we'll, we'll get to it really quick. Uh, I don't know if we can squeeze it in for, um, our next meeting or not, but we're gonna make plans to really dig into that and see what our options are and if it's a good ideal or not. What did I wanna tell you? Oh, I went to the conference. I enjoyed the conference. I, I learned, always learn so much when I do go to them. But the thing that I really wanna talk about is that I went over to the Skill Center and did a tour of what they have over there. I've heard of the Skill Center all of my life, all through my high school education, always heard about the Skill Center, but never actually attended. I went over there and I was blowed away. They have, uh, they have a mechanic room today, and not only do they work on cars, they had large transfer trucks in there. If I hadn't known the Skill Center was really about when my children were in school, I would insist, regardless if they're going to college or not, I would insist that they go and learn a trade. I would insist. So, I think it would be great, and maybe we could talk about it at another time, to not only have, bring the kids over there for a tour, but also invite their parents to come with them. I mean, it's amazing. I seen, uh, where kids are studying to be CNAs. They have robot mannequins in the bed that responds, that is kinda creepy, but it, they respond back to the person who's actually being trained to be a CNA. I mean, it was just totally amazing. I was totally amazed, and I said, just think, all of my life, I didn't know what they actually offered over there. So, the lack of knowledge was, holds us back. So, um, and then they put up a screen to show all the districts that was involved in the Skill Center, and I thought we were part of that.
We are.
Our name was not on that list. I don't know if they made a cutoff.
No, can I, can I check on that?
I looked, 'cause I wanna be proud, you know? So, I'm just checking the list, trying to find our name, and we, we were not there.
May, may I object on that for a second?
Sure.
There are thirty-four classifications over there at the Skill Center. Each school has two people for each classification. That means sixty-eight people can come out of Hammond to go to the Skill Center.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's not a given, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a right.
Mm-hmm.
And Mr. Ternikoff, who is now head of the, uh, the, of the GISD superintendent, as, as a superintendent,
Mm-hmm.
he's one of the fairest people that you can probably have at, at, at the head of the hymn.
Mm-hmm.
That being said, we have the ability to do all those things, but we have an issue with the timing of how the people get there and get back.
That's right.
So, I don't wanna go any further on that part.
That's true, but that's something that we can fix.
We, 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 we have tried. We have tried.
Yeah.
We have really tried.
Well, we need to try until we succeed.
I mean, we give up, I would say, we have really, really tried.
That's what, that's what I thought, and I did not, maybe it wasn't, maybe it was, I thought, that's.
We have kids in both sessions. We have students, and then also, if you wanna know more about it, we also have a program, um, at, that we, our students that are, have special needs attend programs there as well.
Okay, well, you know, you know, people do.
It's just not talked about a lot, but we have.
We need to start talking about it more, and people do make errors. Maybe our name just wasn't on that list due to error. I don't know. But I just wanted to let you guys know that they're doing wonderful things over there. And even though kids do start college, they may change their mind, and I'm.
At least once.
I'm just gonna tell you this, and then I'm gonna stop, okay? I remember when I was in, um, I had to be in junior high school or elementary school. Our school took us to the bank. They took a, gave us a tour at the bank. All my life, I always thought that there was just tellers and the manager, and that's it, and that's how the bank ran. No. When I went on that tour, I found out that there are so many jobs outside of just tellers and a manager. They have, oh my God, um, I can't think right off the top of my head, but they have tons of things that people do in a bank, and they make good money. They make very good money. All these departments, you would never believe that all of this goes on behind the scenes. So, I think if we take our kids and let them know what's out there, because if they don't know, if they think, well, you walk into a bank and all it is is the tellers and the manager, no, there are a million of things that they can do. I worked behind the scenes in different departments, like the commercial loan department, the investment department, all kind of departments, you know? And that's for one thing that you, when you get tired, you know how you work a position and then pretty soon you get kinda bored with it? You can move into another department. It's like you're in a whole different world, you know, and your seniority keeps going on, you know? Even though you're doing something totally different. So, I think we need to expose our kids to, uh, things like that so that they know that there is other jobs out there. Okay, if he has anything else? Thank you so much. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Turner.
I, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you to all our administrators, teachers who present the information on this people who are very amazing and inspiring. Again, I also attended the MSAB's conference, and some of the highlights that, um, I found that were highlights were the one, um, first speaker that we had who talked about innovation, and it's how important it is that we become innovative and let kids have that creative aspect where they are able to do many, uh, great things when they have that component. And when we as, uh, administrators and board members and teachers and everyone also, uh, keep our eyes fresh and keep our, uh, thought process open to new ideas and new things, and then that makes, uh, more accomplishment. And one other, um, class that I attended that was, uh, very impressive was by the Palom Zoo School District. It's one of the largest districts in the state, and they have, uh, their superintendent, Dr., their Dr. Slade, and their approach to improving the gap and, uh, improving their outcomes among their students. And his first, uh, uh, thing that he wanted to improve was outcomes among African-American boys in their school system where he seen that there was, um, uh, not good outcomes with their graduation rates and those and that sort. So, within two years, they made those improvements, and it was inspiring to know that the improvements don't have to be necessarily gonna take us five years or, or ten years. We can see them improve, uh, soon.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm very proud of everybody. You're all working really hard, and I appreciate that. The board appreciates that. Um, have a blessed night and drive safely. Meeting adjourned.